The meeting is hereby called to order for the Blackman's Parish School Board on Monday, June 3rd, 2013 at 6:00 PM at the Belchase Middle School. We will have the opening items. The invocation will be held, but will be said by Reverend Giles and Ms. Martinez will lead us in the pledge.
As always, we thank you, we honor you, and we bless you. Now we thank you for giving us a safe arrival tonight. We pray for a spirit of unity, a spirit of peace, and a spirit of understanding. Continue to lead and guide us in the way we want us to go. Now, my God, that everything be done tonight be done in decency and in order. And we will forever give your name in praise, the honor, and glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Superintendent, roll call, please.
Michael Giles.
Here.
Nancy LaHaye.
Here.
Anthony St. Philip.
Here.
Joyce Lampkin.
Here.
Fran Martinez.
Here.
Carlton LaFrance.
Paul LaMaire.
Here.
Chuck Swallow.
Here.
William Mertz.
Here.
Mr. President, Chairman Quorum. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Item 1.04, approval of the agenda.
Uh, Mr. President.
Ms. LaHaye.
I would like to amend the agenda for executive session. Um, 12:00, I guess. 2.00.
Have a motion offered and amended by Ms. LaHaye, seconded by Ms. Lampkin. Any opposed? Then the motion passes unanimously. Item 2, Blackman's Parish recognitions and/or presentations.
Ad hoc.
Oh, I'm sorry, ad hoc. Ms. Martinez is going to read the committee of the board meeting we had. Yeah.
This is going to be, you're going to read this? You're just going to read it as $50,000 total?
Committee of the Board minutes. Meeting on May 30th, 2013, Belchase School Board Office. Anthony St. Philip, chairperson, called the meeting to order at 6 o'clock PM. Members in attendance were Michael Giles, Nancy LaHaye, Anthony St. Philip, Joyce Lampkin, Fran Baye Martinez, Paul LaMaire, Chuck Swallow, and William Mertz via telephone. On motion of Joyce Lampkin, seconded by Nancy LaHaye, and it carried, it was moved to go into executive session pursuant to RS 42, 6.1A, strategy sessions for negotiations of a contract. The vote was unanimous in agreement. On motion of Nancy LaHaye, seconded by Chuck Swallow, and carried, the committee returned to the regular meeting by unanimous vote. It was announced that no decisions were made in executive session. Mrs. Nancy LaHaye offered a proposal to give Ms. Alberta Cousin, Director of Curriculum and Instruction Secondary Education, a pay raise of a total of $15,000, and to add to her title, Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Secondary Education, First Assistant to the Superintendent. The raise is to become effective July 1st, 2013. The committee agreed to present this proposal to the board at the meeting of June 3rd, 2013. In addition, the superintendent was instructed to make the necessary changes to the organizational chart and to make the necessary revisions to Mrs. Cousin's job description. The committee discussed setting a date to do the superintendent's annual evaluation. Mr. Ronald White discussed bid results for the roof replacement at the Boothville-Vetis Elementary School. This info is in board docs for the Monday, June 3rd meeting. Mr. White also mentioned that there were no bids for roof repairs at Belchase Middle School. There being no further business, the meeting was adjourned at 6 o'clock PM.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez.
Mr. President.
Sir.
I would like those minutes to reflect I participated only in conversations via phone. I took no action towards voting.
Item 2.0, Blackman's Parish recognitions and/or presentation. Item 2.00, executive session. Can I have a motion to enter into executive session?
I will make the motion, and that will be under RS 2.02, 6.1A.
Got an item offered by Ms. LaHaye, seconded by?
I'll second.
By Mr. Mertz. Any question?
I just want to know why do we have to take the executive session? I know we put it at 2.0, but before we do all these recognitions, these people are here for, correct, is it something that we need to do before those?
Presentations.
Well, I have to leave at about quarter to seven.
Oh.
Yes, I wanted to make sure I was a part of this.
All right.
Okay, I apologize.
That's all right, Paul, you can do that.
Okay, we have a motion offered by Ms. LaHaye, seconded by Mr. Mertz. Any question? Any opposition? Then the motion passes. We'll be back as quickly as possible. Executive sessions where no decisions were made.
I need my suit to return.
Mr. President, make a motion that we return from executive session.
I'll second.
Have a motion offered by Mr. Swallow, seconded by Mr. LaMaire. Any opposed? Then the motion passes unanimously. You're going to make your motion? You're going to have to make your motion now pursuant to executive session.
I'll make a motion that Mr. Rusel, that we authorize Mr. Rusel to make any decisions on what we went into executive session for.
Have a motion offered by Ms. Lampkin, seconded by Ms. Martinez. Any question? Any opposed? Then the motion passes unanimously. And Ms. Bula, by the way, the motion is that we'll authorize Mr. Rusel to sign any documents pertaining to Phoenix High School and the contractor to speed up construction.
At this time, I'd like to recommend, uh, have Mr. John Bartholomew come up here and recognize him for his long, hard work of 42 years with the school system, a very good friend of mine, an individual that loves the East Bank and has dedicated his life to Phoenix High School. I'd like to present him with this plaque for 42 years. Congratulations. Let's take a good picture.
Well, I guess one is, 42 years, you can make one or two comments. Just indulge and be patient with me. All good things come to an end, and I am good at what I did, most of the time. And all of the things that we went through, regardless of whatever it was, it was a part of life. And I want to thank every board member and everyone that came to me and everyone I dealt with, and I wish and pray and will pray for you, hoping that you will receive all the benefits that you have given me in the time that you will spend serving public education in Blackman Parish, because it is a task, it is a job, because you have to deal with the public, and it's never ending, the task and commitment is never ending. So I just want to say I commend you for doing that, and I hope that you still stay with the spirit of a Spartan, because we do rise from ashes. We'll never stay unattended. Thank you, and God bless all of you.
Brother President.
Yes, sir.
If I may say something, please.
Absolutely.
Let me, on behalf of the alumni and the entire East Bank, congratulate Mr. John Bartholomew for a job well done. We thank you, Mr. B, for your compassion, your commitment, and your concern, not only for the students of Phoenix, but for the entire East Bank as well as the Blackman Parish School System. You've been an inspiration in my life for many, many years, and I can go on record even tonight of saying you're one of my best friends. We talk, have conversations basically every day on the phone, and I thank you for everything you've done in my life and the life of everyone on the East Bank. I know you're going to have a great success because you're that kind of person. I wish you much, much success in life. The same commitment you had to Phoenix, I remember after Katrina, you was in the school, taking all that mud out, all the old furnitures, and we will never forget that. So on behalf of the entire East Bank, as well as the alumni of Phoenix High School, just to say thank you will not, will never be enough. That's never enough. We're going to say we love you, and whatever we can do to enhance you, enhance your life, we're here for you. So God bless you, my friend.
Okay, item 2.02, recognition of Mary Beth Newchurch, Blackman's Parish Teacher of the Year, Ms. Lori Colton.
Get this out of the way. Good evening. It is my distinct pleasure to recognize the Blackman's Parish Teacher of the Year. I do want to tell you that the selection was quite different this year. We asked that all schools nominate their Teacher of the Year, and so we were presented with some pretty dynamite candidates. The state then told me that we could only nominate one teacher per parish. We used to be able to nominate one elementary, one middle, and one high. So this made the competition extremely, extremely fierce. Beyond that, these teachers were not only asked to talk the talk, they were asked to walk the walk. They had to present data that showed that they had a direct impact on student achievement, and our winner had outstanding growth with her students, her achievement scores are great, and she's well-loved by all of her students and the parents of those students. Once Mary Beth Newchurch was nominated as the Blackman's Parish Teacher of the Year, she was told that she had to present a videotape of her teaching in the classroom. What was kind of funny about this is when we announced her as the winner, we looked at the schedule, and she really only had about a six-day window to do this. It was something crazy, five-day window, right. We were sending her to workshops, she was representing us as a teacher leader in Lafayette, she was all over the place, and you know what she said? "I can videotape tomorrow." So this is a lady who's got something going on in her classroom every day. She doesn't have to prepare, she doesn't have to put on a show, she just said, "You come right in, and you can just see what I'm doing with my kids." After the video was released, she was named one of the top 25 teachers in the state, and at that point, she was told that she was going to be visited by the State Department. They were going to come in and watch her teach. Again, her window was three days? Three days, and she said, "Bring it on, just come on in, bring it on." I will tell you that the next step, the state will be nominating, or I'm sorry, will be releasing the names of the five top teachers in the state. I was told I was going to have that information today, and I think I've stalked the department a little bit today. I've emailed everybody I know, because I want to know the results. But all I can say is that everybody said the same thing. If Mary Beth Newchurch is not one of the top five, I am personally going to the classroom of these five teachers, and we are going to recruit them heavily, because in my mind, there is no better representative for Blackman's Parish. So with that, I would like to invite Ms. Newchurch up, present her with a little token of our appreciation, but it's just a little bit for everything that she does for us. So I'd like to present to you, Mary Beth Newchurch. And she asks some of her students to come as well.
Okay, thank you. This is for you. And you come right ahead. Stay with me. For those of you that know me, I'm going to get all choked up. I'm rarely speechless, they would attest to that, but I am right now. This is a fabulous honor that I will cherish forever. I've only been in Blackman's for three years. This is my 31st year of teaching, but I've started off, I taught a long time in the Archdiocese of New Orleans, and then I taught for a long time in Orleans Parish. And as you people are well aware, we date all of our lives, pre-Katrina, pre-Katrina, post-Katrina. I was teaching in Orleans Parish with Katrina. My school turned over into, I taught at Alice Hart, I live in Algiers. And so at that time, we became a charter school, and being a teacher with a lot of years of experience, the charter schools were not really looking for me, however, I was one of the ones, one of the 10 people that they chose to hire to reopen our school. But once we saw the writing on the wall, those of us with experience looked for greener pastures. So from that stage, I went on to Gretna Number Two in Jefferson Parish. I was teaching there and got caught in a desegregation order, because I was, I had lo seniardi. So that drove me to Shelley. I had taught with Ms. Cooper many, many years ago, and I called and pleaded, "I don't know what I'm doing, I don't know, where am I going to go, where am I going to go?" And then I went over to Ms. Wertz, and it's been a wild ride ever since. You people have opened me, welcomed me with open arms to this fabulous parish. I live in Algiers, I wish I would have known about you guys a few years ago. I have had nothing but wonderful experiences from the time I left Ms. Wertz's office. It has been mind-boggling to me. This is obviously a much smaller parish than I'm used to working with, but I can tell you that along this journey, I called Ms. Bullock, I don't know where she is, that Saturday morning, brought the video. We're tight friends now, because we sat there for six hours with the video. She helped me. I called Rose, I needed scores from last year. Next thing I know, I had the scores from last year. Lori has helped me, Shelley has helped me. It has been a wild ride for these last two weeks. Everybody's been so supportive. I asked the kids to come, because if you know anything about the compass rubric, I hear chuckles and smiles and everything, these kids could do a presentation on the compass rubric, because they know it. Because every time, before we were being observed, we pulled up the compass rubric, and I said, "Look here, look what you're going to be doing, this is what you need to do," because it's all about them. This year was all about them. So I asked them, you know, to come and be part of this, because it's what they did in the classroom. It's not what I did this year, it's what they did. And I've had three special classes. I'm Ms. LaHaye's granddaughter last year, and her class was the class I got a chance to write about, and these kids were on the video, so never in my wildest dreams would I have ever expected this. So thank you. Thanks.
And we will keep you updated when I get those five names.
Okay, item 2.04, recognition of Tracy Bridges, recognized as Accelerated Reader Model Teacher by Renaissance.
The headlines read, "Phoenix High School Educator Receives National Recognition." A local teacher has earned national recognition for outstanding performance in advancing reading proficiency and practice. Tracy Bridges was awarded Accelerated Reader Model and Master Classroom Certifications by Renaissance Learning, a Wisconsin Rapids-based company. Model and Master Classroom Certifications acknowledges Mrs. Bridges' efforts to promote personalized reading practice, assess comprehension, and monitor progress, and have resulted in measurable improvements in reading proficiency. Accelerated Reader Model and Master Classroom Certification demonstrates that a majority of her students have met or exceeded goals for reading practice and comprehension. After reading fiction and nonfiction books at the appropriate level, the students take quizzes to assess their comprehension. Accelerated Reader provides immediate feedback to help teachers facilitate reading level growth. This is Mrs. Bridges' first year reaching Accelerated Reader Model and Master Classroom Certifications, and this is your third year? Fourth year of teaching. So we'd like to present her, Tracy Bridges, recognized as Accelerated Reader Model Teacher.
I didn't know I had to have a speech, so I'll just say thanks, and it really is the children. I wish the children were here, because I just, I just help them do what they do naturally. So, thank you all very much.
Okay, item 2.05, presentation by Renaissance, Ms. Cousin.
We have representatives, whoops, we have representatives from this Wisconsin-based company here with us tonight to talk about what our three circle schools have done with some of the products. You're going to be tested tonight, the little device that's in front of you, so I'll turn it over to Roger Harris, our project director from Renaissance.
And he says it's time for me to exit, right?
And I'll let him, I'll let him introduce his staff.
Wait, this isn't Are You Smarter Than a Fifth Grader?
Because of that spell check.
Thank you, Ms. Cousin. Board members, Mr. Rusel, thank you for having us. It's been an honor, it's been a privilege to work with the district this year, and I'll explain a little bit more here as we go. Courtney promises me that this is going to work, so we'll see here. I did bring some additional personnel with me tonight, so if you'll indulge me the pleasure. This is Cheryl Richardson, she's our Regional Director of the Southeast Region of the United States. This is Ms. Debbie Hux, Director of Program Management Services. And then we have Sheila Warner, Sheila's from Baton Rouge, Louisiana, and she is your dedicated Renaissance consultant that has worked with your teachers throughout this year. So I want to start by saying thank you for the service that you give. You guys are a little intimidating. I sat on that side of a board table for almost 15 years in Oklahoma. I sat in your position for 11 of those 15 years, so I want to thank you for your service, because it's oftentimes, it's a thankless job, and you've got people calling you in the night and saying, "I don't like the way they're doing such and such and so and so." And I'm like, "Have you gone through the chain of command?" You know, so, but anyway. It, I've promised to have you out of here, Ms. Cousin said, "As long as we're out of here by 9:30, we are good to go." So, just teasing, yes. And I won't start mentioning names, I do want to say what a great staff of individuals Blackman's Parish has. Principals, great, they have welcomed us with open arms. Lori, Pam, you know, Ms. Cousin, I could go on and on. I would leave somebody out, and I certainly don't want to do this. So, at the beginning of this year, we entered into a three-year agreement with Blackman's Parish to implement what is called a Renaissance School Excellence Program. Tracy, congratulations. Meeting model and master classroom in Accelerated Reader is a very difficult task to do with a brand-new implementation in one year. So Tracy embraced that, hit the ground running, and she's done a fabulous, fabulous job. So hats off to her as well. And I picked up the newspaper a little while ago, and sure enough, there it is, on the front page of the newspaper, so let me recommend, all of you go out and buy a newspaper. So, in the three-year program, we have a suite of products, if you will. We have Accelerated Reader, Accelerated Math, Math Facts in a Flash, Successful Reader, English in a Flash, Star Reading, which is the assessment component, Star, did I say Star Math?
No.
Okay, Star Math, an assessment component, and Star Early Literacy, which is the assessment component for students who are beginning to learn to read, okay? And we do universal screenings three times a year, and then we can monitor where students are. And then through core learning progression, see what skills those students need to work on next, and we can give teachers in the classroom actionable data for what they need to do next with those students and what in the categories in which they fall. So I do want to recognize you. Some people said, "Oh, my goodness, where did you get those pictures?" I will tell you, those pictures are on your website. So, again, it's been a privilege to work with you. In year one, the key annual outcomes, and I'm just, I'm not going to read these to you, you guys are all intelligent individuals, you can read, I don't have to read to you. Where did that go? Okay. But the year one, goals and annual outcomes, goals and strategies for monitoring progress and celebrating success, the Star Reading for three times a year, the math facts. Math facts, what the research is showing is that when students get to that college algebra classes and those kinds of things, that students are not really ready to do those college algebra problems, and they're spending way too much time on going, "What is 3 times 7? What is 3 times 7?" So consequently, the myelination in the brain, if you're familiar with any neuroscience research, that the more myelin we build in our brains, and we practice perfectly, then we build myelination, and it acts just like an insulator on a wire, and we're able to recall those facts instantly. And we've gotten away from that. I taught 34 years in Oklahoma, and I've, I've seen us move away from the basics of instant recall for addition, instant recall for subtraction, multiplication, and so on. So we have some benchmarks for particular grade levels that students are to achieve. We start out by working on whether they're going to meet them, they work towards meeting them in two minutes, then we whittle off some of their time, and then that works towards fluency, but what we really want is, we want them to get down to 60 seconds, where they have to answer 40 problems with 100% accuracy in 60 seconds. And if you can get it down to 60 seconds, you are fluent in that particular level. And some people would say, "Well, that's all well and good, we have a program, but we only require ours to do 80% accuracy in a specific amount of time." And I have two questions for them. Do you want your doctor being accurate only 80% of the time? And do you want your banker to be accurate only 80% of the time? The answer to that would be no, we want them to be right all the time. So, this year, we also began to implement accelerated math for early users. It was not our focus for year one. Ms. Cousin asked us if we would focus on literacy, so we began to use literacy as our main focus, and now we are beginning to roll out accelerated math. Last year, we rolled it out, but it was kind of, if you want to, get your feet wet, see how your kids will do, those kinds of things. Also, before you, you may have come in tonight and looked at something and go, "Hmm, what is that?" And Casey, I so apologize, we have Casey Francis, she's one of your very own, she's our district account representative for Renaissance Learning as well. She has family that, yep. So, this is the Neo.
She's a graduate of Bureau's High School.
There you go.
South Blackmans. All right, Casey.
Casey, I love working with Casey, so she's excellent. So we're not going to do a real test, but I wanted to just give you a taste. So, we're not gonna do a real test, but I wanted to just give you a taste of what the Neo can do. So if you'll get your Neos and put them in front of you there, and if you will hit the ON button, the ON button is located in the upper left-hand corner. Sure, yeah, you can drive. Okay, Courtney's gonna drive for me, so I can move along. Okay? And if it asks you to connect to a receiver, just push ENTER, choose...
It says laptop receiver, not Renaissance receiver, but just hit Enter.
Yep, just hit ENTER, and it's gonna say, "Establishing connection." And then I want you to... Are they good to go on the responder already, Courtney?
I have a second question.
Okay, we're gonna, first of all, we're gonna start with a true or false question, okay? And you'll notice there's something floating in this lower right-hand corner. That's called the To Know Tool Bar. So this is a quick way to do on-the-fly assessments. We can always float that on our screen, or on our smart boards, or on our, you know, whatever kind of interactive board you have. And you can float that, and we can take a quick assessment of, "How are our students doing? Do they get it?" You know, when I went to school, we had to raise our hand for the answer. "Well, how many of you understand this? Or who can give me an answer for this?" And oftentimes, believe it or not, I was kind of one of the shy ones in the back that was like, "I'm not really sure, so I really don't want to raise my hand, 'cause sure as the world, the teacher's gonna call on me." This is completely anonymous, so it's an engaging tool for our students. So, true or false? Okay, Plackman's Parish School District was recently featured on a local TV station regarding the integration of technology into the 21st century classroom by using the Neo. If you would, press T for true, F for false, and hit ENTER. And if you'll notice what's happening, we see twelve receivers have connected. I have eighty-three percent of you who have entered a response. Typically, what we suggest you do is go, "Okay, I'm gonna stop receiving answers here." Five, four, three, two, one. I click on Stop, and if you'll notice, Courtney is actually controlling it from her teacher Neo. So that teacher can be moving around the classroom. Now she's hit Graph, and we see that eleven of you answered true. There was one that was no response. The actual answer is true. You were featured recently on a TV news station. So, now she will close that. Next one. A, B, C, or D? The Neo can be used for activities in writing, math, and reading. B, Accelerated Reader and Math Facts in a Flash. C, Keywords, Language-Based Keyboarding Curriculum. Or D, All of the Above. Press A, B, C, or D, and hit ENTER. Five, four, three, two, one. I'm gonna stop receiving answers, so she's hit Stop. She's gonna now hit Graph, and the correct answer is D, All of the Above. It can be used for each and every one of those things that were listed, all right? And if you guys are playing along, if you missed it, I'm sorry.[802.12][802.12](LAUGHING). Okay.
You got it right.
Good job. So Courtney, close?
Yeah.
Okay, not a problem. And we're not moving forward. There we go. Okay, another true or false. When using the Neo, students can access the Internet. T for true or F for false? T for true, F for false? Five, four, three, two, one. I'm gonna stop receiving answers. I'm gonna graph your answers. So we're gonna hit Graph, okay? And the correct answer is, they cannot access the Internet through Neo, all right? The teacher can access content from the Internet, so if she or he has complex reading material or complex text that she or he wants to push out to their students, they can download that on their computer, push it out to the student's Neo, then when the kids come in, they can open up File One, read that context, and read the content, and then even respond back to the teacher. So, okay, very good. All right. Gosh, y'all know more about Neos, okay? Last question. Whoops. This is on writing. Based upon your knowledge of the Neo, what one word best describes its capability? So type in a one-word answer and push ENTER if you would. This was the test that Ms. Cusson said you were gonna ask.
By the way, grades three through twelve, English, Math, Science, Political, and Class are... One grade?
Three through twelve, district-wide. Okay, five, four, three, two, one. I'm gonna stop receiving answers, okay? Courtney's gonna graph it for me, if you will. And here's how this works. Amazing, advancing, awesome, encompass, encompass, and excellent. And you'll notice it only gave us five, okay? It will give you the top five answers, is what it will do. Now, they also have to be spelled correctly, so if we... If amazing was a word that maybe we had five students enter, and Courtney, you can close that if you will, if amazing was one of the words, a word that more than one or two or three students did, it would list it, amazing, 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 in order of how they spelled it. So even though if you capitalize it, it's gonna list it, okay?
Can I make one suggestion?
Absolutely.
If you wrote amazing, advancing, awesome, encompass, or excellent, try this, I don't know if it's gonna work. Enter X and hit Enter.
If you entered one of those five answers, enter X, or push X, and then hit ENTER.
Okay, maybe it's not gonna work the way I wanted, but when the people came to the district and did a demonstration, there were still ways to find all the other responses that kids had entered by not stopping the question, but I stopped the question. So there is a way for all of you to...
All answers to be shown.
...like you participated and that you were up there, but I did it incorrectly.
Okay. So now if you'll close that, and then we'll move on, if you don't mind. Okay. Great, so you can put your Neos to the side now, and I'll move on quickly. This is a growth summary for STAR Early Literacy for kindergarten through third grade. This is South Plackman's Elementary. And if you'll notice, this was pre-test scores, post-test scores, and then how much they changed. And what we at Renaissance like to look at are the average scale score growth, because every assessment has a scale. In Renaissance, STAR Reading and STAR Math, the scale is from zero to fourteen hundred. In STAR Early Literacy, it's from three hundred to nine hundred is the scale. So every assessment has a scale score, if you will. And so we're always looking at, well, how much did my kids grow, my students grow? And the reason that we recommend scale score is because it may take you ten or fifteen scale scores to move up one or two percentile ranks. So oftentimes, we look at percentile ranks in scores and say, "Well, my kids aren't growing because they've not moved out of a certain percentile rank," okay? But we can see by looking at scale scores if students are really moving along, if you will. Just an example of one of the many reports, this is Phoenix Growth, okay, in STAR Early Literacy, beginning of year and end of year. And you can see, here's their average range, or excuse me, average age change. And so anything positive, you can see that this first-grade class, or excuse me, the first grade here grew by a hundred and one scale score points this year. These are the literacy classifications that STAR Early Literacy classifies students into. You must have a scale score of seven seventy-five on the STAR Early Literacy test to be diagnosed or categorized, if you will, as a probable reader. Can students take the STAR Early Literacy assessment as well as the STAR Reading assessment? Absolutely. Let's say you've got a student who's kind of on the cusp, who's kind of teeter-tottering, and we're not sure. Maybe Tracy has a first grader who, she's not really sure, they're not really, maybe they scored a seven seventy-six or something like that in STAR Early Literacy, but she wants to give them the STAR Reading test. You can administer both assessments as well. So, this is Phoenix High School as well. So, once again, at the beginning of the year, number of students that were assessed, twenty-five. Probable readers, you'll notice that they had none, all right? And then by the end, they just got finished with their other assessment before school ended, and they had twenty-eight students who took the STAR Early Literacy test were identified as probable readers. This is for South Plackman Elementary School. This is the STAR Reading proficiency. Renaissance and the experts, not just us, but the experts say that if you have eighty percent of your students who are scoring at that fortieth percentile or higher, then you're doing a pretty good job. You've got a good, strong core curriculum, things are going well, good instruction, those kinds of things. So, this is just for South Plackman Elementary in STAR Reading, okay? Here's South Plackman High School STAR Reading. So here's the fortieth percent, we want, you know, or this is at the fortieth percent, but then what percent of the students scored at that fortieth percentile? And you'll see, look at this seventh grade here, where we started at only thirty-one percent of those kids scoring at the fortieth percentile, but then when they just got finished with their last assessment, over fifty-two percent. So we know that those students have had significant growth in reading over time. This is Phoenix. One grade I really want to point out is this first grade. Look at their percentages, and the graph stops at eighty percent. So over eighty percent of their students scored proficient or above in STAR Reading. Moving right along to STAR Math, what do you notice the difference between the STAR Math and some of the STAR Reading? Anybody? It appears that really, the students did really better on the math assessment than maybe they did on the STAR Reading assessment, okay? Now, we can attribute that to many things. Math Facts in a Flash, the implementation of accelerated math, good, strong core curriculum, good, strong teaching, those kinds of things as well. So that's South Plackman Elementary School. Here's South Plackman High School, okay? By grade level, so here's the grade level, okay? Sixty-three percent, fifty-four percent, sixty-six percent, and then by the universal screening dates as well. So I'm really, really impressed for this to be a first-year implementation as to how well your students have done. This is Phoenix. First grade again, notice how well they did. Over eighty percent of the kids scored at proficient or better. Plackman's Parish Schools, the challenges we met this year, misunderstanding of math facts versus the benchmark mastery time, we kind of got off to a little bit of a rough start there. Many of the students met that two-minute benchmark, and then some of the teachers went in, in the software, and changed their mastery time, okay? Once the mastery time in the software had been changed, it erased the student's data and said, "This student didn't meet benchmark mastery," okay? So we want to get off to a really good start and off to a really on-the-right-foot next year. And it's kind of like the Ronco model about set it and forget it. We want them to look and set it at two minutes. And then we want students to begin to take ownership of their progress towards getting that down to sixty seconds by using a mastery tracker chart, so that as students whittle away at their best time and get it down towards fluency and automaticity, that they can record their own times, okay? We had no historical data really with Renaissance products to consider for goal-setting for last year. We sat with the principals, okay? Kenny was there, Peavy was there, all the principals were there, you know, everybody, and lots and lots of discussion about how do we set goals when we have really no historical data to go on as to what we think our students can achieve. So, but they did a fantastic job. Finding time in our day to practice math facts on a routine basis. This is not an add-on, so that like when you say, "Oh, when you finish with your science assignment, practice your math facts, okay? Oh, when you finish your social studies assignment, practice your math facts." We want that monitoring going on, teachers moving around the room, so that if they identify where a student's having trouble, then the teacher can step in and intervene with that student and say, "Well, I think you're misunderstanding how you're multiplying six times sevens," those kinds of things, okay? Numerous initiatives in the school being implemented, understanding and implementing Common Core State Standards. I know you guys are all over Common Core State Standards as well. Finding the time in the instructional day to implement guided reading practice, that's been a real challenge. Your principals have stepped up to the plate because the recommendation is to have thirty minutes of guided, independent reading practice in the day's time. Now that doesn't mean like a drop everything and read, or those kinds of things. That's where students are actually reading within their zone of proximal development, books that fit their ability, and then teachers having those meaningful, deep conversations. Tell me about the books you're reading. Tell me about the last ten pages that you've just read. What's the plot of the book? What's the theme? And et cetera, et cetera. So, your principals have stepped up to the plate this year, and they've found time within their busy, busy schedules to carve out thirty minutes for that guided, independent reading practice. So I think we're gonna see a huge growth in our STAR Reading scores for next year as well. Not to mention Hurricane Isaac, and I can't tell you how many conversations Ms. Cusson and I had back and forth about, you know, we had consultants who were coming in, those kinds of things. Absolutely fantastic, this lady sitting over here, so. Implementation success, this is overall for the Three Circle Schools that Ms. Cusson mentioned. In accelerated math, your schools mastered six thousand six hundred nineteen objectives using accelerated math this year. They scored three thousand eight hundred forty-eight tests. They practiced math facts two million four hundred eighty-six thousand times. And my question to you is, if we didn't have a product to use, how many times would our students have really practiced their math facts? Not only just practiced, but these are graded as well. It automatically grades what they've done when they complete it in two minutes. They mastered three thousand three hundred four levels. Your students read seven thousand one hundred twenty-eight books, excuse me, and they read over seventy-eight million words this year. So hats off to your Three Circle Schools, okay? I say to you that we want to celebrate your success with you. You had great participation in math facts, you're early adopters in accelerated math, the coaching services were delivered, we had great library support for AR, your teachers started using Accelerated Reader along with their adopted curriculum, okay? We had a high level of participation in the STAR assessments. We used the Neo across the curriculum. Courtney has some great ideas. She's very creative, as well as Rose. They've been wonderful about sharing ideas. "Oh, they could be used for this. Oh, they could be used for that. Oh, they could..." you know? So, kudos to them as well. Expectations were clearly defined by your administration. Ms. Cusson, Ms. Lori, Ms. Pam had a clear expectations to the principals as, "This is what we want to see. This is where we want to go." And you guys met the challenge. One more time, I want to recognize Tracy Bridges. She is your first Model and Master Classroom Teacher in Accelerated Reader for the year 2012, 2013. And hats off again to you, Tracy, and a call-out for you for doing... Tracy asks hard questions, but Tracy asks great questions as well, and I appreciate that. I'd be happy to entertain the quick questions. I'll let Casey answer them, if there's any. So, I want to thank you once again, from Sheila and myself. It's been an honor, it's been a privilege to work with you, and we look forward to working with you in our partnership over not only this year, but next year to come. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.[1748.54][1748.54](APPLAUSE). Okay, Board Members, time for non-agenda and agenda items. First of all, congratulations goes out again to Mr. Bartholomew for all of his years of service. He had to step out earlier, but we thank him for everything he's done. Mary Beth Newchurch, congratulations. Tracy Bridges, congratulations. Everybody's done a great job. Mr. Will, we appreciate your hospitality. We thank you for the refreshments and appreciate all that you've done for us. Also, this month, this past month, we attended the graduations, and all the graduations were absolutely spectacular. Just a wonderful, wonderfully, wonderful event to attend and a privilege to be a part of. And... And also, thanks to Renaissance for their presentation. Does anybody have anything else to add?
Mr. President, oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Merz?
I would just like, has Ms. Newchurch left yet?
Yes.
I would just like to give her a special thank you. She taught one of my granddaughters who didn't like school until she had her. She taught her how to love school. She taught her how to even like homework, so hats off to you. She loved you, she still does. You have and will always be her best teacher, and I thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you again for having me.
Let's be careful in neighborhoods. A lot of people like to zoom up and down. Let's just take our time, watch for the kids. Thank you.
We had one other item. We received a card in the mail, and it goes to President and past, past School Board members, members of the Plaquemines Parish School Board. I would like to thank you for these past 31 and 1/2 years of employment. I've been so blessed to have a job that I truly love. I applaud you for your recognizing the importance of art to children and for keeping art as priority in your schools. Most sincerely, Gina Hemel Fitch. Oh, and also, a thank you goes out to Mrs. Clark too for her hospitality. Okay, Item 3.01, Discussion and Appropriate Action in Regard to a Pay Raise for the Director of Curriculum and Instruction and Title I Revision. I'll offer this motion for Item 3.01.
I'll second it, Mr. President.
And this is also, this motion will be an inclusive motion to include any and all other areas for the pay raise, so it will be a total of the 15,000. Any questions? Any opposition? Then the motion passes unanimously. Item 4, Superintendent Comments and Report.
2013 Testing Results, Ms. Makisha Bartholomew.
Good evening, Mr. St. Philip and members of the School Board. On behalf of the Plaquemines Parish School District, I am pleased to present the results of the Spring 2013 Testing. According to a recent report released by the Louisiana Department of Education, 83% of our students scored proficient on all the assessments, ELA, Math, Science, and Social Studies, ranking us 4th in the state in this category of students scoring at basic and Our rankings in ELA, I've highlighted the areas where we were ranked in the top 10 in red, and as you can see, in ELA, grades 3 to 8, 5 out of 6 of the grade levels, we are ranked in the top 10 in ELA. In math, 6 out of the 6 grade levels from 3 to 8, we're ranked in the top 10. Usually, I don't highlight Science and Social Studies. I usually kind of just concentrate the rankings on ELA and math, but this year, the Science and Social Studies rankings were so phenomenal that I felt it fitting to share those also. For science, 4 out of 6 of the grade levels, we were in the top 10, and if you notice, 6th and 7th grade, science, we're 1st in the state. That's to be commended. Social Studies, 5 of the 6 grade levels, we're ranked in the top 10, and if you see 2nd grade, 7th grade, we're 2nd in the state. This year, 93% of our 4th graders met the promotional standards of scoring basic, scoring a combination of basic and approaching basic. This is down from the 96% that we had last year, but nonetheless, we're still 2nd in the state in the percent of 4th graders who have met promotional standards. In 8th grade, 87% of our students met the promotional standards. This is up from last year, 85% of the students met the promotional standards. But what's to be commended about 8th grade is last year, we were 8th in the state in this category, and now this year, we are 4th in the state in this category. Now, I've broken up the test according to ELA, Math, Science, and Social Studies, just highlighting what percentage proficient we are in each subject area. I won't give a complete breakdown of all the proficiency levels in each subject, but you can see that our proficiency levels are very high in the 4th grade in all subject Same goes for 8th grade LEAP also. The darker green bars are the percent proficient, scoring basic and above, and the lighter green are the non-proficient areas. Percentages, I'm sorry. For ILEAP, our percent proficient varied by grade level and varied by subject. So in ELA, we went from 86% proficient to 84. Math, we went from 86% to 79, slight dip. 5th grade, from 85 to 82. Math in 5th grade, we went from 81 to an increase of 82. 6th grade ELA, we went from 83% proficient, we grew to 89%. Math, 6th grade, from 82% to 84%. ELA in 7th grade, which was phenomenal, we went, had an 11% proficiency increase from 76% proficient to 87, and math from 84% to a little dip to 83. Same thing, 3rd grade ILEAP, these are the percents proficient by subject area. 5th grade, we're roughly 80% proficient in all subject areas. Same for 6th grade, roughly about 85% proficient on average. 7th grade. For the end-of-course test for the high school, in algebra, we're 80% proficient. Geometry, 65. English 2, 87. English 3, 63%. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Makisha.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Discussion and Appropriate Action in Regard to Renewal of Workers' Compensation Excess Insurance Policy, Mr. White.
All right, good evening.
Good evening. We have a motion offered by Ms. Lampkin, seconded by Ms. LaHaye, in regard to renewal of workman's compensation executive excess insurance policy.
We have a insurance policy to cover our workers' comp claims over $400,000 per claim. Up to $400,000 per claim, we're self-insured. So this is a policy that covers just that excess amount. Our insurance agents at McGriff checked with 5 different companies for the lowest rates, and the company that gave us the lowest rate was the same company we've had for this year, Star Insurance Company. The insurance premium is increasing by $4,700 a year, but they were the best of the 5 that were asked, so I'd ask that the board approve renewal with Star Insurance Company.
Any questions? We have a motion offered by Ms. LaHaye, seconded by Ms. Lampkin to renew. Any question? Any opposed? Then the motion passes unanimously.
Discussion and Appropriate Action in Regard to the Bid Results for Roof Replacement at Boothville Venice Elementary School, Mr. White.
Offered for discussion, second.
A motion offered by Mr. Lemire, seconded by Mr. Merz for discussion.
We talked briefly the other night about this bid. We had the bid opening this past Thursday for the roof replacement at Boothville Venice Elementary School. At this time, it looks like most all of the cost is going to be covered by insurance or by FEMA. At the present time, we've still got things to work out with the insurance company. We've still got to negotiate with them and provide them with documentation, and we will have to follow up with FEMA. But at this time, it looks like we will not have to spend any more than $100,000 of our own money replacing the roof. The low bidder was Roof Technologies with a base bid of about, between 1.5 and 1.6 million dollars. Alternate 1 was just under, a little under $300,000, which was for a, an additional layer of protection, which, another membrane in between the roof deck and the insulation. And then Alternate 2 of about $72,000 was for a process that's supposed to be odorless when it is applied to the top coat. The other night, I had suggested and recommended that we approve Roof Technologies with the low base bid, and, as well as Alternate 1 and Alternate 2. After some further reflection and investigation, I would like to leave off Alternate 2 at this time and perhaps consider a change order in the future for the odorless part for 2 reasons. One, I'm not 100% sure that that's going to be covered by FEMA. And the second is, I'm not sure that we necessarily need it because our plan is in Phase 1 to do the main building as soon as possible, perhaps without, yeah, without having any problem with, with the children, and doing the second part after the CDBG project has begun, which will be like the gym roof in that part of the school. So it may be that we will not need this, plus if we do do it the odorless way, we might have to pay for it ourselves. So I prefer to just leave off Alternate 2 and have Roof Technologies award this contract with, at this base bid and with Alternate 1 included.
Offered to accept Roof Technologies with the base bid and Alternate 1.
I'll second that.
Have a motion offered by Mr. Lemire, seconded by Mr. Merz. Any question? Any opposition? Then the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Discussion and Appropriate Action in Regard to Approval of the Revised Model for Serving Students with Disabilities, Ms. Mummy.
I'm not sure if your board docs are in color, but all the changes should be highlighted in yellow.
Excuse me, Ms. Mummy? Can, we need to have a motion before we begin? Can I have somebody offer a motion, please?
I'll second that.
Motion offered by Ms. LaHaye, seconded by Mr. Lemire.
Okay, if your docs are in color, the, all of the changes should be highlighted in yellow.
It should be.
It was highlighted.
It should.
Okay. Basically, the changes were made after Ms. Ritz and Ms. Deffley presented a policy council meeting, and then I met with Ms. Ritz, Ms. LaHaye, Ms. Lampkin, and Mr. Rousseau, and I think the changes are good.
So recommend.
And that's what I'd recommend.
So would you be, a motion?
A motion, yes.
Would you make that motion on, for Ms. Mummy's recommendations?
Have a motion offered by Ms. LaHaye, seconded by Ms. Martinez to accept the recommendation of Ms. Mummy. Any question? Any opposed? Then the motion passes unanimously.
Discussion and Appropriate Action in Regard to Approval to Change Bell Chase Head Start from 2 classes for 3-year-olds and 2 classes for 4-year-olds to 3 classes for 4-year-olds and 1 class for 3-year-olds. Ms. Mummy.
So offered.
Second.
Motion offered by Mr. Lemire, seconded by Ms. LaHaye for discussion.
Because of the push statewide and nationwide for kindergarten readiness, it is felt that it's more important to get a larger number of the 4-year-olds in the Bell Chase area in instead of the 3-year-olds, because I believe both the pre-K and the Head Start program have a long waiting list for 4-year-olds, and there's not nearly enough classes to serve them. So I recommend that.
I'll make a motion to accept Ms. Mummy's recommendation on 4.07.
Motion offered by Ms. LaHaye, seconded by Ms. Lampkin, following the recommendation of Ms. Mummy. Any question? Any opposed? Then the motion passes unanimously.
Discussion and Appropriate Action in Regard to Approval of Revised Head Start 2013-14 Budget with 5.2% sequestration cuts totaling $41,774.
Motion offered by Ms. Martinez. Can I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Merz.
And again, if your board docs are in color, the cuts we made are in green font, and I worked with Melanie, me and Melanie Everie, our fiscal officer, spent the better part of a day working on this. The biggest cut we took was we're not replacing our parent-involvement specialist who retired in February, and then we basically cut everywhere else that we could. And that was a required cut because of the sequestration on a federal level.
So Ms. Mummy, is this, these cuts going to really affect our program?
It means the 3 office staff members had to split up 1 person's duties, so we'll be busier. It's going to affect us in the office more than it's going to affect the kids. The biggest effect on the kids are going to be things like we won't have a field trip, we slash the supplies money in about half, and we'll no longer pay things like for staff meals. We had always paid for the staff meals so they could eat with the kids. So we're trying to cut things that will have the least amount of effect on kids and families. A lot of Head Starts are having to cut classes, cut enrollment, and lay off staff. Luckily, because of someone retiring, we just have more work in the office to do, and it will hopefully have a minimal effect on the kids and families.
And that, and those services or anything will be cut from the Head Start program.
That's what I was going to ask, Mr. Rousseau, to make sure that, um...
We do. We supplement it already.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I have to say thanks to the Finance Department and the School Board because you all do a lot more than what you have to do for Head Start, and I appreciate that.
Can we have a motion to accept Ms. Mummy's recommendation?
So offered.
Second.
Motion offered by Mr. Lemire, seconded by Mr. Merz. Any question? Any opposed? Then the motion passes unanimously.
Muffy Head Start Budget Report, Ms. Mummy.
That's an informational item, and I don't need any motion on it. If you all have any questions, I'd be glad to ask them. And I had another informational item that I submitted, the review, the possible review dates, but I don't see it on the agenda, so I don't need...
It's under information.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
It's under information.
It's in there.
It's in there, but it's in here. They told me I had to, they had, they gave me 2 sets of dates and told me I had to give them 16 possible weeks in those dates, and they can show up on any Monday of those 16 weeks. They don't have to announce them anymore.
Thank you, Ms. Mummy.
Thank you.
When do they need to know the date?
They're in that letter.
When, when does the board?
They're going to announce that. They can show up on any one of those 16 Mondays.
Oh, okay. We don't have to respond or, or pick anything.
No, I think it's 16 Mondays or something.
Okay.
16. Discussion and Appropriate Action in Regard to Bid Results for South Plaquemine Elementary Enhancement Projects, Mr. Barker.
So offered.
A motion offered by Mr. Merz, seconded by Ms. LaHaye.
The bid tab for the project is in your board docs, and the low bidder for the best material would be Thigpen Construction.
And Thigpen is with concrete, is that correct?
Yes.
And the low bidder with asphalt is hard rock.
Hard rock, yes. We put the project out, we were, we thought possibly that asphalt might be cheaper than concrete, because that's generally the case, but because of the location, most of the contractors were actually able to do concrete cheaper than they could do asphalt. I think with the exception of 1 bidder, that was the case. So if they, they actually deducted for asphalt, or deducted from their price to do concrete. And it is within the, it's within the budgeted amount that we had put together for the CDBG budget. budget.
Okay, we need a motion to accept the results of the bid.
I'll so offer.
I'll stand.
Have a motion offered by Mr. Mertz, seconded by Ms. LaHaye to accept the bid of Thigpen. And any opposed? Any question? Then the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. I would ask the board the approval of the board consent agenda, but I would like to delete 5.04 and vote on 5.01, 2, and 3.
I'll so offer.
Second.
Have a motion offered by Mr. Mertz, seconded by Ms. Martinez.
Mr. President, I'd like to recuse myself from item number five in 5.03.
So noted.
Mr. President, I would like to recuse myself from item number 5.03. Item number one, yeah.
So noted.
I'm a little lost.
Any question? Any opposed? Then the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, board. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Jim Tiedemann to come up for an information item presented to the board, some information on the hurricane recovery Katrina and Isaac, to let you know where a little money's gone and where some's coming from and how much we're spending. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. This is information only. It doesn't require any votes or anything, and what I thought I'd do is walk you through Katrina first, and then maybe we could stop with some questions, things like that, and then we'll delve into Isaac. So I'll try to keep this as concise as possible, and this may be something that we might want to do on a quarterly basis, I would say, because I think monthly, you may not see great amounts of changes, but quarterly probably could work pretty good.
Could we get, could we get this by project? Future reports, could we get it by project, wrap it, everything worked together?
Well, would you like specific projects? Because if you could tell me which specific ones, I could do that, because right now you've got, I think, 180 projects all told.
But isn't, it's all on like some kind of Excel sheets or something, huh?
It's a database, that's correct.
Yeah. Where we can see like, and then the ones that are finished, they're finished out, we have all their money, or we don't have their money, or in other words, to, to look, to group them together is not really telling much.
Well, I thought what we could do tonight is go through the big picture, and then I know what I've talked about with the superintendent is possibly a finance committee maybe go delve into this in more detail, if that's, if that's appropriate. All right. Let's just start with, because, you know, and again, I would, Ms. LaHaye, you've been with this a lot longer, and so a little of this is, I'm going to say, for the benefit of the entire board who hasn't, a lot of whom don't really know what I do. So, yeah, so I thought I'd put this together, kind of let's get everyone up to the same page, and then like we can go into more detail here. Let's start with just what we have obligated so far from FEMA. Right now, obligated, you have 208,975,742. Now, that's your total commitment from FEMA at this point. In construction, it's written as 139,692,407. Contents are 16,183,599. Your grounds, and incidentally, that was an alternate project that has just been approved, so we've gotten our roll-up on that. The grounds are 1,552,805, and your emergency work, that was the emergency work mostly immediately after the storm, but it includes your temp facilities, is 50,435, and that compromises the 208 million that's currently obligated. What we're actually expecting at the end of the day is that you're still going to have some increase in construction, and you're still going to have increase particularly in consulting fees from what's been obligated so far. So we're expecting that the total reimbursement and obligation from FEMA is going to be 221,957,742, I'm going to say roughly. That's an estimate. Current expenditures in the FEMA disaster total 166,636,000. FEMA reimbursements to date are 134,905,57. We currently have in process about, and by the way, that 134 number, that, that is from the state, that's all, everything that they have reimbursed us, and that tends to lag behind a couple months from what the actual reimbursements are. So right now, I would expect that number to be somewhat higher. And then what we've got in process roughly is about $5 million. Now, and remember, we've got insurance in all this, too, and you guys settled with your insurance company for roughly $16 million. And that's a rough number. However, you settled with your insurance company, but you had to go to attorneys who took, I'm going to say roughly about, and I think your settlement was, was somewhere between nine and 10 million at the end of the day after you paid the attorneys. I've still listed the 16 million because your attorney fees for settling with an insurance company are a FEMA-eligible expense, but we're not going to know the total number on that till the very end of the day after closeout. It'll be one of the last tasks that will actually take place, will be to then go after the attorney fees and have FEMA reimburse that. So right now, we're looking at a big delta of about $10 million between what we're expecting that FEMA's going to pay and where we are, I'm going to say, on paper, but I want to go into that a little bit more. In the Katrina, in that delta that we have, the difference of 10 million, we still have some alternate projects that are in the books. Now, the alternate project in particular, I'll use as, as an example, is the purchase of the Woodland Office Complex. You purchased that complex, it was paid for out of general funds, but at the time, nobody knew that there was an avenue to go back through FEMA and request it as an alternative project. So what I've done is I've gone in and requested that as an alternative project. So some of that money, you're going to wind up getting back, and that one's in process right now.
Is it included in that 10 million?
What I'm doing now is showing you how the 10 million, how we're, we're closing the delta on the 10 million. So this is how we're closing it. And the next one is, we've got roughly about, I'd say, 8 million in PW versions, and I'm going to go into a little bit more explanation on that after this, about 8 million in PW versions. And then we have miscellaneous cash that's there waiting closeout. And the reason it's waiting closeout, this goes across mostly your category B PWs, the reason it's waiting closeout is that the state's not really going to address it until that point. So that means that we're going to have to wait until we're actually closing these things out before the state really wants to go in and address anything under, I'm going to say, oh, it could be anywhere, 10, 20,000 dollars. So right now, we're going to be, have to, to wait on those. Is there a guarantee that we'll close that 10 million to zero? I can't promise you that, but I think with, we're in pretty good shape to, I get it possibly as close as we can, so I don't think that the school board right now is at risk of losing a lot of dollars on Katrina. And I also want to reiterate that everything with Katrina right now is earmarked. There's been some concern that because we've only drawn down to a certain level, but our PWs are written to a level up here, that, that someone's going to come and take that money away. And the answer to that is they're not going to take the money away if it has been earmarked for either construction completion or alternative projects. And remember when we came in, or I came in, and we talked about alternative projects, it was, I'm going to say, fall of last year, I think? And it was because we had a deadline of roughly January 1st to account for everything we hadn't spent to say, either we have a plan to spend it or give it back. Or give it back. And we're not giving it back. It's all been accounted for. Now, that said, I'm going to tell you, there are some PWs where we have given money back, but those are PWs that were written for an amount, we spent this amount, and the project is totally complete. And there are some of those that are in there, most of them in the category Bs, that's the emergency work, we're not going to spend any more money on it. We don't get to keep that extra because that PW is nothing but an estimate. It's not actual, we only get what we submit on it, and we're not going to be able to submit some more.
But that, that excess doesn't get you going to alternative projects?
No. Nope. Our turn, alternative projects are where you're not going to rebuild what you had before. The excess that I'm talking about is a project where you've rebuilt it, but instead of spending 100 and, well, I'll use a specific example. The ball fields that are down at Port Sulfur, the stadium that was there, the one that was rebuilt after Katrina, the PW was written for 220,000. We spent all total on it, 157,000. So the project's done. We have to say we did the work. We don't get to keep the extra, and laughingly, don't, don't tell your cohorts this, I call that the Saint Bernard approach, because they actually went and tried to do that and are having to give money back. But in this case, we're not giving any money back because it's money we never spent. So it's the same thing as budgeting for something, if you don't spend it, you don't get it. So it's not any money out of our pocket. Right now, we have a lot of, and most of, I'd say 90% of tasks that I'm involved with have to do with PW versions. And the PW versions that we're being requested to do, we're at a point with FEMA where they want to know what the total Katrina disaster is going to cost. And they've put various deadlines on me to come up with a number for what we think this whole thing is going to cost at the end of the day, for two reasons. Number one, they want to keep the appropriation that's there, and number two, if we're going to spend less, then they can take what's budgeted for this disaster and send it to New England or someplace like that. So what I've been doing is spending a lot of time on PW versions, and most of the versions wind up being, centering around either construction amounts, like the bid comes in higher and then what the PW was written for, so we need versions, change orders, a lot of work on consultant fees. And I'll give you an example of that. Right now, we're missing reimbursements or losing reimbursements because when Patriot gives us an invoice, they give us an invoice and it's a record of everybody's time, and they're doing construction material testing, of course. It's a record of everybody's time, but it's by project, which is the way it's supposed to be. When Patriot bills overtime, they may have Bob from Patriot who's working six hours at South Plack High, and then he goes over four hours at Phoenix, but he's showing two regular hours at Phoenix plus two overtime hours at Phoenix. Well, I've had to go back to Patriot, and we've had to work through about two years' worth of building calendars, so it's, we're, we're able to go back to the state to say, okay, here's the justification for the overtime, because you know what, they, it's not that they don't necessarily pay the overtime, sometimes they just kick the entire Patriot invoice back. And so it's very, very long tedious process because, for reasons I'll get into really in the next slide, you know, the challenges that we're working on right now are, I call versions, actually, it's Ron's analogy, versions are like tax return, amendments to tax returns. You've got to go in with the justification, the documentation, you have to go through that process that I just mentioned to, number one, get FEMA to understand it, but number two, and I'm covering some of these bottom points here, number two is that, and this is not being critical of GOSEP, but the people who process these things on a state level to reimburse us many times are, I'm going to say, bookkeepers and so forth, high-level clerical people, they're not construction people. So when they see something, when they see something that just doesn't, doesn't register with them, bingo, they send it back. They're not experienced in construction, so it takes a lot of effort to get these things through. And FEMA and GOSEP don't necessarily, from the reimbursement side of it, I'm going to say, they don't, they're two separate entities. In other words, somebody won't go to FEMA and say, hey, do you think this is eligible? No, they go back through me, through our SAL that works with us, then it has to go back up the FEMA channel to get them to write it up as, as eligible. The other thing that slows this whole process right now is FEMA staffing and GOSEP staffing has been greatly reduced. It slows our reimbursement process because, for instance, where before you had, even when I started in, I think, 2010, you had about, oh, I'd say, three, four people who were just dedicated to Plackman's Parish School Board. Now we have a half. And the same is happening on the GOSEP level, too. In fact, I don't have a half, I have a fifth of a GOSEP person right now as a SAL. And the staff turnover, I'm not even going to ask how many, how many PACs you've met in some of our FEMA meetings, because, I mean, it's just constant. Six months is, is long spin for some of these people. So again, the purpose of this Katrina overview was to just get, you know, kind of where are we in this whole process and, you know, how are we doing with things and so forth? And so that's kind of where I wanted to go right now with just this part of it. Any questions on Katrina? Then I have Isaac. Okay.
I'm wondering would only be like our face?
Yeah.
For us to have a Katrina project? And, and, you know, what was approved? What was paid out? What was sent back? What, what was still holding? And what is getting closed out? And the reason for that is, one day if they decide to come back, they're not going to go to, it's the obligation of this board to know that. And I don't want to say, I don't know that, I've never seen it. I, I do, I, I want to be able to say, well, maybe I didn't understand it, but I saw it. I had the information.
No, and I can get you that information, but also I am here through closeout, if you want me to stay through closeout, yeah.
But we just, in, in, in other words, in the conversation I had with the senior guy in my house, and listening to other issues that other places have had, it is the obligation of this board
Right.
to know all of that, to have at least seen it. And right now, I would have to say, I haven't seen it for any project. And, and we've had changes of people, we started out with different people than what we have now. So that's something this board really needs to see, to have documented, and we need to see somewhere in the same place if we can pull it out.
He will be doing a presentation in the finance committee, and we'll discuss that, and he'll get more detail in it.
Let's move on to Isaac. Isaac is still a, very much a work in progress, I want to tell everyone. Currently, you've expended about 2.4 million on Isaac. FEMA has obligated category B work of almost a million, contents of over 100,000, your grounds 60,000, force account labor, which is something that was never really well captured in Katrina, we've got all that force account labor accounted for, so you're getting that even on. Boothville, where it's more than just the roof, that building took a lot of damage underneath the roof, so the 2.1 figure, that will be an actual cost, I want to also add that. And miscellaneous, including this building, they, the way FEMA wrote it up, they've got this building, but they've got some other miscellaneous damages in PW for a total of So that's Isaac. Now, Isaac is going to be different than Katrina, and this is the part I wanted to, oh, and I'm going to go back one second. We expect that number to grow, and that's because we're still getting, you know, the 2.4, of course, is, is just a snapshot in time, we're still getting bills on it. But when FEMA wrote that, they wrote it not collecting bills that we're still getting even in the category B work, and... it not collecting bills that we're still getting, even in the category B work. And when I say still getting bills, I mean, we just straightened out, I should say, the accounting department just straightened out through their work, the generators and things like that, which are part of the CATB, and we're how many months after right now? I mean, it is amazing, and, you know, and I'm, I'm not whining about it, but I mean, it really is amazing how long it takes just to collect all your data. And FEMA's gone. Not to say that they're not going to increase it. The way this disaster works is different than Katrina, they're not sticking around. They wrote it with an open door for us to add more to it, but they're gone. We're not having any meetings or anything. They're said, you know, we're calling, calling this disaster closed. So, not in terms of money, but only in terms of their manpower. So. Here, though, we have insurance. And the insurance, you had insurance before, but we have insurance, but we also have a 15% of the building value deductible. And we have a lot of small damages at various sites around Plaquemines Parish, like South Plack Elementary School, relatively minor damages that aren't going to meet the deductible. So right now, and this is a very, very fluid number, because again, we haven't settled with the insurance company, we don't know about how Boothville will settle out at the end of the day. So it's looking around 800,000 in deductibles, where then FEMA comes into play. And there is a 25% cost share on this disaster as opposed to Katrina, which was 100% FEMA. This is 25% applicant and 75% FEMA. And so I just put this up here because we're a long way off from it yet, because I wouldn't guess that we'll be closing this one for another year and a half. But we are going to have to keep in mind that, you know, at least under this scenario, about a $200,000 expenditure would be, you know, likely what you're going to have to do out of pocket on it. And, you know, I hate to say it, but living where you do, you're going to have to expect that you're going to incur expenses regarding storms. So. So that's kind of a progress report of where we are right now. The PW for the 2.4 is not obligated yet, but it's in the state system, which means that it's, it's there, they just haven't put the money in the bank, so to speak. So. Any questions?
I was just handed a note. One of the board members is asking about the status of the Woodlawn Building.
Woodlawn, yeah. Woodlawn, right now, we have a PW that's written for roughly 20,000, some 20-some thousand, I don't know off the top of my head. That's for repairs for Katrina. It took some arguing with FEMA, but then the argument was that I had to go prove that there was a use for this building prior to Hurricane Isaac. We're getting all the flood damages on that building, which amount to about $575,000. So it looks like we're going to get about $600,000 between Isaac and Katrina, and most of it Isaac, that will go towards the renovation building repair and so forth. That's the proposed teacher apartment. Now, what I haven't done, only because I'm still waiting some firm numbers on it, and there was a little resistance on it, and I like to take these things in small bites. If you go to FEMA and say, oh, Jim, I need $10 million, they, they usually have apoplexy, but if you go there and say, I need 900,000, then suddenly it's a little bit better. I think we can get some FEMA funding to actually raise that building as well and elevate it. My goal, but I can't promise you anything because FEMA changes quite often, my goal would be hopefully that you could do that project, maybe even spending less out of pocket than you were planning to spend out of pocket or out of the general fund on that building. So that's kind of where the state is right now. I would advise, I think it's, it might be on the architect's agenda to go ahead and bid the roof on it, you know. I mean, you, I'm assuming you still intend to move ahead with the project, or maybe that's a discussion that needs to be had, but you ought to secure the building, and you can elevate the building, remodel the building, everything under a new roof. And, you know, just highly recommended.
Right, I think we did, yeah. The tear down of the-
If you tear it down, you can't build anything else. That's the problem.
Well, we're talking about the two different buildings. For the teacher housing, the, the question was, do we want to start spending money? If it's so expensive to raise it and remodel it, do we want to, are we sure we want to do that before we start anything? Because we're afraid it may be something out of our own pocket to get started with the roof. And at that time, I think the question was that Jim was going to find out what could be paid for by FEMA. And the dollars he's just mentioned seem to make it much more economical for us to go ahead and proceed. So that was where we were. We were slightly in limbo. We didn't want to jump ahead on something that was going to cost a whole lot of money. But I, I would recommend at this point that we go ahead and proceed. Obviously, the board has voted to remodel that building. It's just that developments since Isaac include having to raise the building and that sort of thing, but it looks like now it's, it's much more economical than we were afraid it was going to be. So we will go ahead and proceed and let the architects know that we can go ahead and put out for bid, immediately securing the roof, and then they can finish the design work to find out what, you know, the raising part and that sort of thing, we'll put that out to bid. As far as tearing down the Woodlawn School, we're waiting for the architect, hopefully this week, the architect will have something with that. We've had a little bit of good news at this point. It looks like the hazardous material abatement cost will be less than what we thought it was going to be, at around 700,000. We think it may be three, yeah, about half that. That original estimate was based on us, or us or somebody reusing the building, as opposed to removing the hazardous material and tearing it down is a lot less expensive. So that's starting to look like it's going to be a lot more economical than we were afraid it was going to be. But they are still doing a little bit of work with the company that is doing that hazardous material abatement assessment, because there were some other materials that they needed to look into, light bulbs and that sort of thing. So I'm hoping this week that we'll hear something from the architect, that he's all ready with his design, and then we can bring that to the construction committee and go ahead and put it out for bid.
I spoke to Ms. Acosta, and she's going to have him moved out for the timeline that we gave her.
Well, FEMA is actually going to reimburse the parish for the record removal and disposal. So, you know, it's parish property, so.
That looks like a move, Coach.
Now, I know, now, they, they actually might be willing to spend the money, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Tiedemann. Also, another information item we have, there's a special meeting tomorrow, Tuesday, June 4th, at the Belchase Office, 6:00 PM. It's a special board meeting for evaluation of the superintendent. Yes, ma'am. Any other information items? Okay, item number seven, citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens' comments? All right, item eight, date and time and location of the next meeting is going to be June 8th, 2013, at the Boothville Venice Elementary School at 6:00 PM. July, I stand corrected, July. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So offered, Mr. President.
Motion offered by Mr. Mertz, seconded by Ms. Lampkin. Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned.